The opportunity to be here for District One. This is my first chance to do this. We've kind of been doing some things in a different way, but we decided that we want to do it very much about the district. It's really about you. It's really about you guys who live in the district. It's about you. If you wouldn't mind, we'll stand real fast. We'll do a pledge of allegiance and we'll do first just a moment of silence. Councilwoman has asked, we just limited to that and we'll do the prayer, we'll do the pledge of allegiance right afterwards.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have an awful lot of city people here. We're here to answer your questions. We're going to briefly talk about a few things real quick, but then we're going to really open it up to you. We have, I think, a little bit of everything here. We certainly have what I always say, the number one reason I think people choose to live in the city of Pensacola and pay the additional fees is our public safety. We have fire and police here well represented, but I also say our parks and rec are right there. We certainly have people from our parks and rec right here at the Victory Center and the Roger Scott Athletic Complex. We're very proud of what we have in our, I guess, our stuff here for recreation. So we're very proud of those things. But there are things that we do here that are a little bit unique to other places. We certainly have our airport. Appreciate them being here. We know the airport, well, the airport is in District One, so there are many of us that live around the airport, maybe in different districts, but the airport is in District One, so of course, of course, we needed to be there. We have sanitation, we have housing, we have development services here for all of those things. Of course, we have our PIO, we have an intern here, so we've got, we've got the whole crew here. And of course, the most important person that makes sure we actually run, the microphones are on and everything else, Robert Greer. We appreciate you always being here, Robert, so thank you. Wouldn't be a city meeting without Robert. So there, I do want to say real quick, I just want to recognize, we do have another elected official in the audience here, Commissioner Robert Bender. Commissioner Bender, appreciate you being here as well. Spent many years myself coming to a few city meetings when I was District Four County Commissioner, so appreciate you being here and being a part of this. This is the new District One. I wouldn't let the Councilwoman, Freire, talk about that stuff coming up, but we did have this out here, so those of you who are now, some of you may have been in District One, have been taken out, some of you may now be in District One, but we did want it to certainly be here in what we're doing. We've got a number of things. Obviously, the airport is very big in District One. We have, you have a fire station, Fire Station Six here in District One. You actually have Fire Station Seven also, or is it Five? Seven, yes. We skipped Five. That's the one we go to Seven. But Seven is also in District One, so there's a lot of things that are in District One that we're a part of. And certainly, I think, when I look at what our community centers and athletic complexes, when you look at Roger Scott, when you look at the Victory Center, you look at Gold Point.
Not anymore, not anymore.
Gold Point's moved out. So we've got a number of parks in Scenic Heights as well. So again, we've got a lot of things that are in District One. It certainly is an important part of our, our community and we realize that. Obviously, the rain today, I always say there are two good things. One is you get to tell if your building has a leak. My real estate background, that's how you know your building's got a leak. If you give it a nice rainy day, Robert, it looks good in here. It looks like we don't have any leaks, so that's a good thing. But the other thing that we get to see is obviously the challenges that we have with our drainage and we, for the most part, we've been working very hard, investing a lot. I know there's some places in District One, certainly along Langley, that I continue, there's sometimes a desire to think that all the drainage problems somehow are just down by the water in downtown. We actually have some of those here in District One and we're working on those. We continue to move our plan forward as we, as we are looking at things. We have some things right at the pond right here. It's one of our projects, increasing the pond here at Marketplace that is going to be one of the new ponds that's going to be expanded through the money through the ARPA that we're going to, that we're doing. So that certainly impacts, I know through Sally and some of the other storms have impacted certainly large portions of District Four, but also District One. So we have, you know, a number of things that we're still doing related to stormwater here. We've got a whole list of stuff that they put before us that we're doing. Langley Avenue Transportation Safety Study, we've been, that's been a priority. I know it's been a priority near and dear to your hearts. I know the Councilwoman has been near and dear to her heart and I really appreciate, and Amy, I didn't see you. I saw Amy Tubal back there. Her team is really working hard to do that. We want to make Langley safer. We know, we know the challenges that are there. We have Spanish Trail Pipe Rehabilitation. Looks like that's going to be some more stormwater. We also have the Marketplace Pond Expansion. I mentioned, the Marketplace Greenway was extolled. I know that was back when that was District One. Now it's District Two, now it's District One, but that was a project. And that was a project we were really able to do, we had to do in-house. It did not come in budget when we looked at going outside. Our concrete crews got out there and made it happen and it is nice to have additional sidewalks in there and we're continuing to try to make our community more walkable all the way around. Summit Boulevard Road Diet right here, Roger Scott Tennis Center are redesigned for 12 new hard courts and we're trying to get that back bids are due at the end of, end of the month. Citywide LED lighting upgrades. Our Housing Department is in the back. We certainly are continuing to deal with our CD, our community development block grants, which are available to provide assistance to residents seeing, continuing to see unforeseen hardships dealing with COVID. So we still have all of those things. We have a residential housing repair program, home buyer assistance and attainable housing in build program. We are certainly no stranger to what challenges. It certainly is good that at no time in history, people, probably more people wanted to be in Northwest Florida. We know the challenge though, for you and for everyone else, is housing and we're trying to work through that. So Marcy and her team are here. If you have anything that you need assistance with, we will continue to look and see what we can do. We very much are still trying to work through that. Neighborhood Services Challenge Grants, they are open for submission, but they close on August 31st. I know, I think, Scenic Heights Neighborhood and their similar other neighborhoods have gotten grants through that. It's a great program for your neighborhood associations. I know Scenic Heights is one of the strongest neighborhood associations right there with East Hill, very good neighborhood association. Please look for what you can do to fill out for those grants. Kelsey Powell is handling some of those. I didn't see Kelsey here tonight, but Kelsey's doing some of that. Then we have Roger Scott Pool and Bath House Renovations, design underway, Hitzman Sports Complex, we just completed, Scenic Heights Basketball Goals Complete, Victory Center Playground Complete and Woodcliff Park Playground Complete. Obviously, the big things, we are finishing up Hangar Number Two for Project Titan for ST Engineering and we'll be moving to the other side, which I know for many of you in District One, at least, it will not be so much right there for you, but we'll be moving over to the other side. I really appreciate the patience. Everybody's working through that construction. I think it's almost finished and they should be shortly operating and we'll be moving the construction to the other side of the airport. But that's kind of a little bit about what we're doing right now and the things that are going on. As I always say, it's really the men and women. We have 800 men and women that work for the city of Pensacola. They do an amazing job every single day. So many things are happening that you don't have to think about what's going on in your community because they're out there doing stuff and I can't say how much I appreciate them. They're here tonight to answer your questions if I didn't answer them, but I'm going to turn it over to the Councilwoman and let her have her chance to talk to you and then we're going to open it up to you and we're really here to listen and work with you and see what we can do.
Councilwoman. Good evening. Welcome here. I don't really know that I need a microphone. I never really need a microphone, but I'll do it. Just to keep an eye, this is our new district. We lost Woodcliff, so him saying that we, the Woodcliff Park, right when that got finished, we lost it. So that is no longer considered District One, nor is the part of Bangwoods that was. We've gained this.
But we're not, we're not going to check your ID to see if you can still go to that park.
We did gain this area over here that I'm not sure on the, on the east side of Spanish. That's the first time we've gotten that area and we go all the way up and we, we capture the mall now, which we did not do before. So not only do we have the airport, we have the mall. We are, you know, arguably, I'll take this from Councilwoman Myers, we are now the cash house of this. We have the airport and the mall, so we've really, we're a hub for bringing it up. You see that we have all this open space and that's why we have such a big district because that is all the airport, all right? So for Parks and Rec, I know that most of my district was very aware of our last Parks and Rec, but we have our new Parks and Rec Director and probably sometimes the most important person to us in the, in the area, so thank you for being here and raising your hand. And Airport. And for Commissioner Bender, not only is he here because he's, he's an elected official, but this is his district. So I'm his representative and he's my representative, so it works pretty nicely. So as far as this area right around here, the things the mayor pointed out with, we are seeing the tennis courts be redone and we were able to change how that was going to be done. So we were going to lose the last clump of trees behind the tennis courts where the Boy Scouts had their hats started there, but we were able to redesign and be able to keep that. The Amy Tubal, Amy. Amy's been working and getting things really in line for us to evaluate Langley and the traffic issues that we've been having on Langley. I know that that's going to be one of your questions right there. I see someone who's written to me about that, is coming for that reason. The other issues about Langley, I know the traffic issue, so we've got all the people in place here to be able to answer all these questions and in anything that we don't answer, I want you guys to remember that you always just reach out to me and I'll get back right away. So if we would like to go ahead and start, is there anything particularly you want to hear from me before we get going or we'll just let it go as we're going and answer what we can and then fill in as we're going?
Councilwoman Breer, if you could, Adrian walked in as I was, you went in. Adrian, you want to introduce your staff that's here because I know you've got a good team that runs this. If you have the chance to, to at least introduce some of your staff and I would say, if I have any other directors in here, Chief, if you all want to come down and just introduce yourself and introducing your people that are here.
Thank you, Myers.
Chief, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I actually do, to everybody. Longtime Pensacolean, born and raised here, so I have a fantastic staff. Most of them have very different hours than most of the people in the city of Pensacola. People recreate on the weekends and early in the mornings and typically late in the afternoons or, you know, I know Maggie is here and Maggie is, is going to probably be here till like 10 o'clock at night. So for my staff and looking at the surrounding group that's here, I represent the Parks and Rec Department, 93 parks, a lot of transition going on in the city of Pensacola and the fact that I was able to be able to utilize the expertise of a really good staff has been fantastic. We've got a lot of growing pains that we have to deal with from a standpoint of not enough capacity for parks or soccer fields or pools and those kinds of things, but that's, I think, in my perspective on it, that's a good thing. We have more people, more youngsters, more adults engaged in outdoor activity than probably in the history of the city of Pensacola. And the fact that they are getting out and doing things after the pandemic that we've all gone through, I think that's a massive thing, that's a massive challenge and my staff is on board to take care and try to do the best we can with those shortages that we may have in fields, soccer fields, pools and so on and so forth, but understand that we're very well aware of those shortages, those challenges and we're set forth to try to do something about those things.
Adrian, I appreciate that. I really just quickly want to introduce some of y'all to the different departments. If you don't know them already, I'm going to ask them to raise their hands because I'm not going to take your race time with them coming up here. But I see Marcy Whitaker Housing, Sherry Morris in Development Services. Fred Crenshaw, you have some, you have some people here as well, your staff, right? Fred is, well Fred's waiting to be, waiting to be perhaps confirmed by the council. Fred is, Fred's come up through sanitation. He's doing a great job for us and we certainly always have challenges, but I say they are one of the most important people we have in this community. Fred, if you want to introduce some of your team members that are here, that'd be good.
Yes, sir. I have Mr. Natasha Buchanan, she's over the 311, so when you guys call me in, there's a department to help with that. And I have Mr. George Smill, he's my second in command and he's over the yard trash, yard waste, anything that's going on, but being my second in command, garbage, recycle, yard trash, he's the man. And he was my boss.
Yeah. I was just, I was about to introduce her. I figured I'd introduce her. Listen, if it makes money for the city, this woman takes care of it, make sure we get more money. So Amy Miller, thank you very much for what you do. Another department she has that makes money, Matt, in your team, you want to?
I'll point out your Airport Director and you have our Assistance Director for Plant and Engineering, Mr. Ken Ibo here tonight to answer any questions. So thanks for having us.
Chief Randall, you want to introduce the rest of your members, your team?
I guess I have Deputy Chief Kevin Pickle here and Captain Eric Ross, he's over our community, our Community Operations Division, which handles traffic, Airport Police, City Gardens, schools and all that stuff, so all the specialty stuff, sometimes that come up to me, please tell all of you.
I see we have Deputy Chief Brock Jester in the, in the back, back there from Fire, so, and you don't have anybody else, I'll let you go. And then Casey, you've got, you've got your, you've got an intern here, so I'll let you introduce.
I'm Casey Lagarde, I'm the Public Information Officer for the city, so any news releases that you see from us, social media posts, it probably comes from me, unless it's not good, then it must be. But I have with me today Leah Norton, she's a Public Information Specialist, sorry, Leah Justice. She's recently married, so I so-called Leah Norton, but I need to get used to the new last name. And then we have our Public Information Intern Jade Ndees with our Summer Youth Intern Program, so we're excited to have him through the summer and they are both a huge help to me, so thank you.
And the last thing I wanted to say, I want to say, appreciate Antonio Bruny serving on our, as Councilwoman Breer's appointee to the Charter Review Commission, so thank you for your work and service on that. I'm happy to, you just want to, you want to call him up?
I gotta just finish that.
You go ahead.
I will. And just so you know, so Rand, Rand Hicks is the, over the Parks and Rec Board and Antonio serves on that for us as well, so they both are very much. We have soccer here, so, right here, so we're doing it. And just for the heck of it, you have a candidate for mayor in the back, so if you have questions for him afterwards, then don't let him out without giving him a hard time, all right?
I'm glad I answered those questions.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
Want to bring them up?
One of the, one of, one of the people I know have been working very hard to get Scenic Heights looking good, Joe Matthews. Joe, you want to come up?
I don't think I need a microphone either, but. A comment and a question. The first comment, when you ran for mayor, you promised to work with all of us in the neighborhoods and you have really done that. We have so appreciated you and I think we will miss you, but thank you very much. Now the question, you talked about the Langley Traffic Study being a priority. Is that traffic study taking into account the new apartment building and the traffic that will come down Langley because of that?
Do you want me to take this because I know it?
I'll be happy. You can take that. I would ask Amy to come up, but you can go.
So the count on traffic was from where the city starts on Langley moving east to, to Spanish. It did not officially have the count from those apartments, but they were informed and, Amy, if you want to, they were informed and we're trying to add in, we sent them the number of apartments, the number of bedrooms per apartment, all that information to be included in that study.
You said it perfectly.
Thank you. So we hope that, so we have not seen the complete formal study finished. It's supposed to be back in August and, you know, we've got initial information back, but we do not have everything, but we have been pushing for that information to be understood and included, for sure.
Amy, and it's untrue that we only hire people named Amy at the city, but Amy, if you could come forward and just kind of talk a little bit about, because the next question's also on Langley, so I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about Langley. Definitely, I know it's a priority. I know, I know, I've worked with many people for a long time about that and I know it's near and dear to the council in its heart, so if you could just talk a little bit about what you're doing, because we really wanted, we wanted, we were waiting for you to get here with your team and really be more inclusive and looking at what we're doing to make it more walkable.
Sure. So that particular study, Councilwoman Breer brought that forward to the council and they pushed that initiative forward. So we have a consultant on board right now and they're doing the safety analysis because there are concerns about pedestrians and vice versa, being able to keep down Langley and we understand that there's schools there, there's the roundabout, there's the park. And so the consultant's evaluating all of that in terms of what kind of safety initiatives we can do to Langley to help, you know, mitigate some of the concerns. And so that is what they're doing. They're taking into account that, you know, we have to be very careful what we do on particular roadways because you don't want to then cause an adverse effect on other neighborhoods. So that is part of the initiative that the consultant's looking at, is making sure that whatever the recommendations are, that it doesn't adversely affect the neighborhoods adjoining Langley Avenue.
Thank you.
We also had Ms. Dickinson, Sharon Dickinson?
So while she's coming up, Sharon's been requesting and working on this for longer than most anybody and so this is very near and dear to her. You've talked about that for me. This is very, very important to Ms. Dickinson.
And, so I, I hear two things now that the Gold Point Parks Director has moved here. I'd like to just mention that the automatic doors at Gold Point do not work. There's a lot of older women that come in with walkers.
The automatic doors.
They do not work it on. And we've taken it to the people at, at the desk and they said they moved it up, but they still don't work. That's been for about two years. And the handicap accessory bathroom there, you have to use two hands to open that door. The hydraulics is so tight that an elderly lady would be trapped in the door trying to get in. Just to signify. But for the Langley traffic, I live off Hibiscus and when I come up to Langley, I have turning left towards the park. The bike lane was eliminated when the soccer complex came in to put parking along that lot, along that area. So when you try to pull out of Hibiscus onto Langley, there's a car parked right there. There's a curb and you have to pull out into the road to see to the left. And I do remember, I remember, and that two years ago, when we were talking about that retention pond and Jennifer was there and my daughter was there on the phone, you said, "Okay, Jennifer, you're going to get that four-way stop at Hibiscus and one of Lee's Way." So my granddaughter was also there and she keeps saying, "Grammy, when is that four-way stop coming?" That the mayor said. Because she followed the soccer complex issues very closely. So I would like to know, when are we getting that stop set?
Well, I definitely always said I was looking at one at Lee's Way and I know that Councilwoman Breer's been on me about the one there at Hibiscus and we're looking. I don't want to prejudge anything that's in the, that's in the study, but I think clearly we want to find a way to stop traffic, but I don't, I know in a lot of ways, I know, and I think that data will come through, Hibiscus is a major, is a major walking point and Lee's Way is another walking point, so I do think those will come up, but I think it's, you know, I, at this point, I'd like to see what the study says and what, what says of that, but I mean, we've got, we have, we, on the team is Caitlin Serain, who's, you know, it's her job dealing with.
Prior to her team, prior to her team, two years ago, you said we are getting, you clearly said, Jennifer.
I don't remember ever saying, ever saying the one on Hibiscus, but I, we have been looking at the one on Lee's Way.
I know.
And I know Lee's Way's been the major issue and I didn't want to say is what's the best route for them to do. I look for the professional engineers. I agree, I understand Hibiscus is incredibly important. I would love to, I would love to see what comes back on the report, but I mean, we can always look at it there, but I'd love to see what, what comes back. Again, I want them to be able, I don't want to limit them to look at it and say what it is, but we clearly want, we know Hibiscus is important, we know, we know Lee's Way's important. And I've always said, Lee's Way's one I want to figure out and what we could do there. So I agree.
Until you've made that parking up to Hibiscus. And it is a school zone, it is a school crossing right there, so, and the traffic has become so unbearable, you can hardly pull out. So I would really, and you did say it.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're right there and again, I would like to hear, I'd like to hear what our team, we've put together a real good team that is very much focused. I think you, you said, what was, what was the timeline?
The preliminary results are in. The full report comes out in August, I believe, and I will tell you, as they all know and everyone who watched, I have been very, very adamant about understanding both Hibiscus and Lee's Way. The main concerns they're looking at, and I'll just expand for Amy on this one, is that when we stop things, how much traffic, will we then force down those roads to avoid the stop signs on Langley? So will we inadvertently, if we, which I'm still, I still believe it's the correct thing, is to stop at Hibiscus and at Lee's Way. But when we stop at Hibiscus first, are we going to cause more traffic to turn right on Hibiscus, go down towards your house and use the side roads to avoid the other stop sign at?
You still go to Langley and Lee's Way.
I know, I know, well, I'm, yes. That's, but it's absolutely, I mean, I, we know it, we have in the room, we have a team that has walked this with each of.
I'm talking about, I'm seeing you out there.
I know. She did honk at us while we were doing this.
I'm everybody.
I do too.
The precedent was set on the other part of Langley.
It was.
At Schwab and Lanier, they don't even have nearly as much traffic as what Langley is getting at that end. And those stop signs are there at Schwab and Lanier and Collin.
And your point is valid because when those stop signs went in on the other side of Langley, it changed the flow there and it allowed it to become a neighborhood again instead of just a thoroughfare. And that is, there's, we've got the airport guys here and so with all the construction, they've been using Langley to come zipping down and that has been complicated and so if we can encourage and encourage them to go a different direction, we absolutely want to encourage them to go a different direction.
Summit is a four-lane zone. It's obvious Summit has four lanes and they don't have, what is it, the third one of the traffic from your traffic study?
Yeah, they did come a little higher this past year on their, on this study, but we are still, we're looking at approximately around 15,000 cars, 11,000 to 15,000 cars, I believe, between Spanish and, I think the original one went to Tippin, I don't know where the new one is, but, or to 12th. It's a lot of traffic for that two-lined neighborhood. It is, it is absolutely.
And again, you've been mayor for two years.
And again, we got a team looking at it. I promised you we were going to do that, we're going, we're going to do something, Ms. Dickinson, we're going to, we're going to do something that is going to make it where it is more walkable.
And drivable. She's, she's right, because driving is very difficult to make that left. Any of those lefts are very difficult there.
And I'm going to hire Collin and I still can't see.
I know.
Go to Langley.
We're, we're, we're doing that and that's, I think, overall, I am very happy with the team we've put together in traffic. They certainly are worried about cars, but they're more than worried about bikes and pedestrians and I think it's changed a lot of the thought process of the way we look at things in the city of Pensacola. I think we've got the right team on board and I think getting them to look at this, they're going to come up with the right solutions. I don't, I don't want to presuppose what those solutions are because I'm confident they're going to come up with good ones and I know Hibiscus and Lee's Way are the two that have been referenced there.
And just because I can't see some of my people right there, so I'm going to stand and we don't have any more unless someone else would like to speak, but I do want to point out that, I mean, you guys know, I came into this gun barrel with you over these issues and I have to thank the staff. David got right on this. David gratefully handed this over to Amy. Amy, and so this is a new staff, this isn't two years ago, I want to point that out. This is a different group of young and innovatives and.
And, and so I think that they went into their, they, they made this process easier. We were able to get the traffic study without going all through all the hoops that we sometimes have to go through for these traffic studies. So there have been efforts here to really make sure.
But there's four stop signs, count, 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 count. It's a lot cheaper.
I didn't say this. Antonio for the pink form, it's two years ago. So I mean, this is like a long process. And we have, we have, Miss, I'm not here to start at the Neighborhood Association based on trying to get that stop sign at Lee's Way. And so that's how many years now, Laura?
Twelve.
Twelve years. And so literally, from 12 years ago till this year, we've never had professionals on board with us trying to make this happen. So even though we all wanted it done 12 years ago, for the first time ever, they're not just looking at Langley. They're looking at what happens to Lee's Way when we put a stop sign there? Are we going to direct all the traffic south on Lee's Way and now make Petosia make thoroughfare? More than it already is. So like, we've got stop signs to the north on Lee's Way, but we don't to the south. So what do we need to do to accommodate all this so that we make this the most walkable, biteable and drivable? And honestly, because you and I both know that there are, there are quite a few wrecks that happen there even when they're not recorded. So, yes ma'am?
Will you implement, will the city implement the traffic study recommendations while Mayor Robinson is still in office?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start, we're gonna start, we're gonna start putting stuff in as fast as we can. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna, I mean, I can't, I mean, our whole goal is to get something in and I, I would think, I would think, I would think that Councilwoman Brer is going to be supportive of whatever comes out of that and figure out what to do. So I'm not worried about a change of mayor or what happens. We're going to be moving those things forward.
Okay, so the question really is, are we going to make sure this is done before we let the mayor off the hook? You gave us a problem. Yes, we are going to really work hard on it. And not get him on the hook on this one until we end it.
We're gonna, we're gonna implement everything we can. And, and I mean, listen, I live now in District Four, but I have lived in District One, I lived on Petosie. I'm well aware of what happens if you just divert cars and they decide they want to go down Petosie and they want to go catch up on Spanish Trail right there. I mean, that's exactly where I lived, on the other side of Flax, between Flax and, and Spanish Trail. So I'm, I'm very familiar with those areas that you should go in the south. So again, this is why we'd like to look at it holistically. We're very concerned about Langley and what we do to help all of you find a way better to traverse it, whether it's by car, by bike, or by foot. We understand there are a lot of little people that are going to school there that are walking. We absolutely want to be safe for them. We want Lee's Way to be safe, we want Hibiscus to be safe. But we want to make sure that we, we don't do something that's going to impact the rest of the neighborhood that we don't, that we don't foresee.
And then, and from the north side of Langley, I, I witnessed to my fear, these three youngsters right here try to ride their bikes and get across. And we had to evaluate where we could do it. I went and stood it in the middle of the road so that they could come across. It is very scary. We know it is. I mean, we, we knew it and it's, it's panned out that it absolutely is. And so the, the best part is that we've got Amy on board and Amy's working real hard with us to make this happen.
And what do you have to last, Jen?
November 23rd. November 23rd.
Because you're Mayor Hayward, he's still inside the complex and just before his last. If he can do that, you can do that.
And I reopened it and reevaluated and promised you we were going to have a vote, which we did. So, but, but I know we disagreed on that, but we got your trees saved, we got your trees saved.
Not all of them.
Mainly. Were you about to ask a question?
I just want to say that I think that this activity, this representation, this action that's happening right now so fast and furious is a testament to you and how involved you are in your neighborhood and how you, you may not see a lot of people here because they all are constant contact with you. They don't need to come to a special meeting to see you. They talk to you and respond to them. You're here representing us and I just want to say that I appreciate you, everything you're doing.
Thank you. Very, very nice of you. She really couldn't say anything else. I just want to say, there is nothing else she wasn't allowed to say when we planned what she would say. And then other things that are going on, I actually, sorry, Ms. Miller, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna broach this and I'm gonna let people start thinking about some of the questions we're going to have to ask about sanitation. Because this is going to need to come up. And there are some, there's some issues with sanitation where to pay the people the fair wages that they need to earn, which everybody needs to earn, everyone needs to be able to make a livable wage working for us, that we had to up the, the salaries for sanitation. There's also been a little bit of, you know, other stuff that maybe we can clean up and, and not have to come to the people. We've got to make some decisions about whether we're going to up sanitation rates, I'm just telling you this real honestly here, for the future, so that we can, sorry, Mayor.
No, I'm, I'm happy to-
No, no, I'm about to say something. What we are not good at is putting money into savings to plan for the future. We build it, we don't have any money to take care of it. All right? Sanitation needs a fund to replace their equipment as it's coming. Everybody does. The parks need a fund to repair things as they happen. We either, we either have to make decisions to stop building it until we take care of it. I mean, we, but we've got to start planning in the care of what we do. It's, you know, build it and they come, they come, but then we don't take care of it. So we've got to figure out a way around this. So sanitation is one of those issues. These costs are kind of escalating. So there's questions to ask. How do we accommodate that and not put all the burden on the people? Do we go to only one recycling pickup every two weeks instead of one every week? Do we, I mean, we've got to make some real hard choices. Do we want to keep everything like we are and then potentially have to evaluate upping the cost of sanitation? These are some real questions that we're going to need to ask and answer in August probably, so that we plan for the future. But what we do know is that we're gonna have to start having savings for taking care of things as it falls apart. Right now, we have a bathroom not open at Roger Scott Pool because it doesn't work. And we've got a bathroom that's a little bit decrepit at Hitzman, not the new one, the older one, but it's still there for people to use and people still get stuck in there and people have to keep going for them. Those are issues. But, and so we've got these things, we're really good at building things, but we have not been really good at planning for the repair of those things. And that's what we've got to consider and start raising our gaze, looking well down the road and planning for. And so I, I just want you guys to think about this, that these are hard decisions. And they're hard, but we have to start putting money aside to take care of what we want and what we need for the future. Yes, ma'am?
Jennifer, another important part, you said, if you're going to do a project, stay on budget. That bathroom over at Hitzman has been budgeted to be repaired for three years, I know, at least three years.
It, it was and then the money disappeared from the budget. And so now we have no money. But neither of these bathrooms, by the way, in our district, neither the one at Hitzman nor the one at Roger Scott, do we actually have the money to fix at this point.
But if you're building a house, you stay on budget.
So, yeah, we do. But we're going to have to start making some hard decisions. I think honestly, sometimes when we have all these asks of new things we want, we might need to curb that a little bit, fix things first, get a grip first. You, nine, 94, 96, how many parks is it we have?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four parks. Ninety-four.
How contribute?
Ninety-four parks. A playground in one of those parks right now is, is ranging between 300 and $700,000 when we get it set in. 300 to 700, for one, because these play areas come in one, one piece. So we, we either have to rethink how we do these parks, have some parks maybe more passive, some parks, I mean, what we have got to really think about this so that what we have is shiny and nice and taken care of and we, we can actually afford to take care of it and do the right thing. So those are all questions that we're looking at, trying to plan for better for the future, those kinds of things. But in the short term, when we make these transitions to those kinds of plans where all of a sudden the money is not seeable because we're putting it forward to the future, it's a little bit of a pain. And so we're going to have to understand what kind of pains we're going to take to, to move this stuff forward.
But Jennifer, during golf courses, they're losing money for years.
So it doesn't so much. It did pretty good during golf.
It did good during golf.
Yeah, but my money lost.
But you know, honestly, Sharon, parks and wreck is not a winning, it's not a making money thing. It's, it's amenities for the public. That's what we pay for with our tax dollars because that is what, as a community, we've decided are things we need in our communities to make it livable. So, so those aren't always, I mean, that's not a, but- Your point, I know these-
He's staying right out of adult tour, so I don't want to throw him under the bus completely.
I, I would simply say that, that, that yes, we have a lot of parks. But I would tell you that the challenge is every time you talk about cutting a park, that park is next to somebody and that is the park for them.
Exactly.
Every park in the city is important to someone. And so we try to respect every single park. They all have a different purpose. They don't, some have playgrounds, some don't have playgrounds, some, but they all have a purpose and they're all special to someone in Pensacola. Because I can tell you, if you try to talk about doing something with them, I will get phone calls immediately and, and emails. They are all special, they all do have people that use them. The fire, I just want to be real quick on the, on the, on the sanitation. We have, which you're going to see coming back, we've, we've adjusted the increase this year. The increase actually falls almost to what the ordinance from the council already says we're supposed to increase about the CPI. It's unreal what the CPI is this year from year to year. But, but, but we are, we are in the process of doing that, but we are not going to mess with the other charges. We, Amy and I have discussed that and we're, we're, we're not changing anything else with the other charges. But we do need to go up on the bus, the base rate of it. And again, for the most part, we've done a fairly good job and most of our money essentially business is certainly the gas company, the airport, port. All these other ones are working and they're actually funding and making money. Sanitation is, is working, we get all the, we get everything picked up. But I mean, we are having some challenges in operation because we haven't, we haven't, we, for a while we've stayed fairly stagnant and we're, we're needing to catch up because a number of things happened. Obviously, the world of competition, we were losing drivers. We couldn't afford to get drivers if, if, if they could, you know, it's right now, if you can drive a truck, you know, there, there are opportunities available for you. So what we need is, we need some more truck drivers out there. So if you, if you've been, if you, if you decide you, you want to pick up a new skill, truck driving is a good skill to pick up. We're definitely going to be hiring.
Someone slipped in that you might need-
Ah, he did, he did. Carrot Fiddler. Carrot, do you want to say anything? Carrot Fiddler.
I just want to welcome everybody. My wife had a flat tire, so I have to pick up my daughter from West Florida, I asked her to contribute and practice. So apologies for being late. Welcome. I know most of you, Mr. Groney, we've, we've met and, you know, that sort of thing.
I told Amy to tell you not to come.
Carrot, Carrot is our city administrator. Just in case you guys have not met him as yet. Slipping over there. All right. Are there other issues or questions that we haven't addressed that you'd like to know anything about? Pool, we had some issues with the pool, a lot of complaints from-
Hopefully, hopefully it got them solved.
I raised a little bit of concern, maybe. And everyone kicked it real good, all three pools are up and running. The scrape paint has been scraped off, so we don't have paint flaking around the kids and it looks good, by the way. Have you been back recently? Because it looks so much better. I went, I went last Sunday with my grandchildren and they enjoy it, so. But it's looking much better and the people are being able to get in. I want to thank you guys all for that. Trying to think of what other things we have going right now that are the utmost concern with in our district. We've got some more, which is, every time you guys call me about a plane over your house, I just want you to know that, that call comes to me and then it goes to him. So it goes bing, bong, just like that. And he gets it just, and he's like, ah, what's up? And so by these very receptive, when we're trying to make the airport, the airport's such a touchy thing because we all want it and it's also kind of difficult to live around. So we're working real hard to try to make that as pleasant around as possible, yes.
The airport, I noticed that you guys built that imparping in front of the hotel there. Are you going to do anything with that imparping that you were using, it wasn't being used this temporary?
The overflow, Matt.
If we do, it's going to be in very long term.
Okay.
Worst case scenario, if we have the park situation we had for instance last year, we may use it on a temporary basis, but that's probably for future development.
But we've had some burn concerns and, and I have to tell you, as soon as I call them, they're on it, they drive it, they look at it. So really trying to be really receptive that we, we both have the benefit of the airport without all the kind of distress of the sand and some of the issues. So, so Matt's been really helpful with, with that.
We understand we're in the middle of everything and we might be good neighbors.
I will say at this point, if I get complaints, because I don't live in District One, I do live right off the South Runway, if I get complaints, nine times out of 10, I, I know exactly what it is. It's not a passenger airplane, it's, it's typically the Navy. Which I remind them though, that is the sound of freedom. We can't tell the Navy they cannot come in there. So as, as an airport, we, they, they have the right to come in, we don't, we can't tell them no. So, so nine times out of 10, if it's complaints, I'm like, yeah, it's a military jet.
Well, that's not the kind of comments he gets from me when those come in. I'm like, ah, it's so loud, you know, that causes heart attacks. He's like, I know, I know. We're trying to go a different way.
If you want to call, if you want to call the base commander, I'll start letting you do that, Councilwoman, I'll be happy to let you do that.
I, Matt's very receptive, so, but there's, there's that, I, I haven't figured it out yet, but I'm trying to figure out the benefit that we gathered the mall. But for the life of me, I don't really know why that's always been a big deal where the mall is and which district, but that doesn't seem to-
I don't think it, I mean-
Help us that much. Anyway, so, anything else? Antonio should probably, we've got the, the rest of the charter review coming Tuesday. We tried to finish it up Monday night, but it was so extensive that it was, we are in recess right now as you look at us. And so the, the rest of it will come up on Tuesday at 5:00, we start back up. The commissioners for us worked incredibly hard over, over quite, quite a few months, really going over our charter and the charters of other cities like us in the state, trying to come up with the most equitable stuff. And I just want to point out, even sometimes when we don't adopt, everything that we adopt that they have recommended will have to come to a vote for you on the November ballot, which is a real issue because it's going to be at the end of the ballot. There's four, I think four constitutional amendments on the state after everything else and then this would follow. So everything we decide to change to this charter is going to be following those four constitutional amendments. So we know, we know that there's vote, there's, people get real fatigued reading through all those things. And so we're trying to be as concise and put them together as, as responsibly concise as we can. But in that, I, I want to point out that even sometimes when we might not agree or accept everything that they suggested, what they have done is pointed out the parts of our charter that really need to be reviewed and considered and thought about. And so we could always look to ordinances. Just saying. You can, you can do things in different ways. Some things need to stay really solid in, in the charter where it is the law of the land, other things might need to be more pliable that you can change as time goes on. And so the difference between, between the two. But we're working real hard on that. Honestly, they worked way harder on it though. So we're just trying to work through what they've done for us. And that's really, we've got the budget coming up, that's heavy. You know, some things that you guys might not realize, but that is the biggest thing that a council member is tasked with. That is by law our job and that is to balance that budget and make sure that we understand and take great responsibility in spending the people's money. And so that also is coming up and our fiscal year ends in September, so the new budget will have to be ready by that time. Thus, the August coming forward for sanitation.
While I would say, while I would say the voting for the budget is the most important part for the legislative arm, the administrative arm has to put together that budget. And so, yes, we've put together a balanced budget and we've now sent it to the council. The council will have the chance to review it and look at what we've got. So I'm very proud of what we've been able to do financially for the city and keep the city in a good financial position. Our finance team does an excellent job. I mean, certainly there are a number of challenges that happen. Not everybody got everything they wanted, but we certainly focus very hard in making sure that the things you need to serve what you want are there and there. It's always good when you tell us what it is, but I tend to think, you know, like I said before, public safety is always one of those that comes right there. Parks and wreck, certainly our public works team, what they do, sanitation, just a variety of other things, they're all important. And it's, we know how critical it is. Like I said, any one thing we do doesn't seem that hard, but it's the fact that we're doing 800 things at once that makes it a little bit hard. And, you know, again, I think, I think at this time, you've got a number of men and women who work very diligently every day to make sure that this community is well-prepared. And again, I don't say this lightly, there is no time in history that we've had more people that want to be a part of this community, that believe the things that are happening here, the economic opportunity, the vibrancy, the things that can occur that want to be here. And it's because we very much built a community that people want to live in. There are certainly challenges with that. Price has been a challenge, but the good news is we don't have to worry about demand. People want to be here. It is the kind of community that people want to live in and that's what we've been very focused. And again, that's what we're focused on Langley. We're gonna create a community that people want to live in, they want to walk in, they want to bike in. So I promise, Ms. Dickinson, we're gonna have a solution for you on Langley. I can't tell you exactly what that solution's gonna be, but I'm confident that these men and women, they will find it and we will get it implemented.
So I've told the mayor this, anyone who watches knows we never, we often don't agree. I've told him this in private and I'm gonna say it, because this is probably, this will be the last time that I have a meeting like this with him in the public where it's just us. But his legacy, in all honesty, is that he has put together an incredible team. There is really an incredible team in this staff. We've got young professionals that are innovative, thoughtful, looking at things in a different way. I have said this before, yes?
You have?